All right, are we ready?
noticed on July 13th. And it was not noticed on July 13th because that's today. Yes, what day was it? What was it? The ninth, thank you. That's no worries, I just noticed it. Duly noticed on July 9th, 2021 through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin, 19.84, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Second.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Ardray and Commissioner Herta, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okey doke. And we are all in attendance today. Safety message, Commissioner Ardray, try to keep it like within 30 minutes. I'm teasing, no, no, you have to know that he made a joke about making our meeting go longer tonight to 7:30. So, so I'm just saying, that's not what I really came off, did not come off well, and I apologize. That's not what I, that's not what I meant. All right, context is everything.
Thanks for the addition of 15 seconds there. Okay, safety. So what does safety really mean? What does it look like? What, when we think safety, what do we think about? Anybody actually, I can, somebody can chime in here.
Hard hats.
Hard hats?
Full.
Protection. All right. So my little slogan hasn't quite stuck yet, so I gotta say it more often. Where are you at and what are you doing? So, the reason why I think about that, because everything falls into really as simple as, where am I at? What am I doing? I can be in the line of fire, where we're driving, we're always in the line of fire. If there's a task that we're doing, we can look at the hazards and those kinds of things, we're in the line of fire. What am I doing? Well, if I'm in a car and I'm driving, I'm actually driving, and I need to pay attention to not just what I do, but what other people do. So, as we just think about those things, and we focus on just a few of the states, and when I say states of, it's sort of, what are you doing? Are you rushing? Are you frustrated? Are you actually in the line of fire? Are you tired? And the one that gets everybody, are we being complacent? Because I've done this time after time after time after time. I've cut a tomato. Well, okay, did you make sure your hands weren't in the right way? I peeled a potato. You know, and I see people and grab a potato and, well, okay, how can this go bad? You can actually miss and hit your arm. So really, just a short story is, there was a chef, and he been complacent, done, peeled a potato probably tens of thousands of times. But this one particular time, somebody said something to him, he looked away, and he caught a major blood vessel in his arm. Fortunately, there was enough people around to take care of him. But this is something, it just goes to show, when we don't clue in with where are we at and what are we doing, it's easy for things to happen, to go bad quickly. So, one of the things, and you know, those particularly you Kevin, has been around as long as I've shared this, I'm like, really, as a school district, I want us to go to another level. And when I say another level, really connect with the students. Because as we think about seat belts on the buses, the younger students can get in, put the seatbelt on, because they're used to getting in cars putting seatbelts on. Well, we should have safety be second nature like that. So we need to start as early, come through the doors, pre-K, four-year-olds, and continue on from there. So, I say this hesitantly but with much enthusiasm, and we can include it in a minute, and I would like for it to be repeated, is I will gladly volunteer to come into any teacher's classroom to talk about safety, so we can start to push, where am I at and what am I doing? Thank you.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Thanks Greg, that's, now that you mention that, I had a experience today with my grandkids. So, and, we're going to the Hobby Lobby, which is a whole nother story. But, three of them, and I made it a habit, I didn't even think about it now, it's been an unconscious habit, I said, kids, be careful of your fingers and look out for traffic. And I say it every time they get in and out of my vehicle. It's just something I do, because I've experienced both of those things, kids getting their finger slammed in the car, and, anyway. And one of them kids, grandkids, said, Grandpa, you don't have to tell us that anymore. And it didn't strike me just now, that how I've been doing that, just to do it. And you know what, I'm gonna continue to do that. You know, it's just these things that become part of your nature, if you, you know, work a little bit at it. I'm not perfect at it, but, I don't know, that just kinda struck me, you know, that I thought I'd share that, so thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Citizen comments, it doesn't look like we have any tonight, and neither in-person nor virtual. Consent agenda. Could I get a, thank you. Okay, I heard Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Hayworth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, that is unanimous and passes, thank you. Okay, superintendent update, Mr. Pufol.
So Commissioner Ardray just told the story about a chef who was not careful enough with his knife and making sure he had some people around that could help. Well, if you need some help, these are the folks you want around, right? So, these are four of the fives, district nurses, and I'd like to give each of them a minute to just introduce themselves and let you know what buildings they work at and how long they've been with the district, and then I'd like to say a few things about some of the amazing work that they do. And so, let's start over here with Heidi.
Hi, everybody, I'm, oh, sure. I'm Heidi Baki, and I believe this is my fifth year with the district. Prior to this, I was 10 years at Lloyd Hospital. I have Wilson, Washington, Adams, Madison, Franklin, and Arise. So I have six schools in total, over 2,000 students that I cover. So, it's busy, but I love it, so.
Hi, I'm Molly Marshall. This will be my third year with the district. Prior to that, I also worked at Lloyd Hospital for a year, I've been a nurse for almost four years. I have Harrison, Jefferson, Monroe, Kennedy, and Marshall Middle School.
I'm Ashley Combs, I also worked at Lloyd Hospital with these lovely ladies. This will be my fourth year in the district, and I have Parker, Rock River, Charter, and Tagos.
And I'm Katrina Hubner, this will be my fifth year with the district. I also came from Lloyd Hospital. I previously worked there for like eight and a half years. So I cover the South Side, so I have Jackson, Lincoln, Van Buren, Roosevelt, and Edison Middle School.
To apologize to Lloyd Hospital, I, you know, so often when we think about heroes, we think about people who play sports or great gymnasts with the Olympics coming up, and that's really cool, right? But, folks, these are some real heroes, right? So, in a normal school year, as you, as you heard, they cover a lot of schools and are responsible for a lot of students and work with hundreds of staff in each of those environments, each of them as well, right? And, and they deal with a wide range, right, of physical and emotional needs of our kids, and frankly, sometimes our staff as well. And they do it with grace, and they do it with professionalism, and they, and they're highly competent at what they do. Well, fast forward to March of 2019, and of course, we don't need to tell each other what happened, right? And, and what the implications of that were for us for the last 16 months. And so on top of all the normal work that they do to make sure kids are safe and supported at school, we had a pandemic. And, and we had to learn how to contact trace, and we had to have layers of communication, all kinds of new protocols, and, and sometimes changing, you know, kind of expectations, certainly by the day sometimes, sometimes it even felt like by the hour. And, and these folks never wavered, right? And, and this district, as we all know, was one of the very few big districts, well, one of only two big districts that kept its doors open for in-person instruction. That's not possible without the work that these folks did. And they were right, not on the cutting edge of all of that, but on the bleeding edge of all of that. And so, I can't say enough to say thank you to some real genuine heroes on our staff. So please join me in giving them a well-deserved round of applause. And as a little keepsake, one of the things I try to do for people who have gone really above and beyond in exceptional ways is to award them with something I call the Superintendent's Promise Keeper Award. And so, it gives me great pleasure to award each of these fine folks with that symbol. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anything any of you would like to say? You certainly don't have to, but if anybody would like to, I want to give you that opportunity.
I just want to say, if you guys ever have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us. Shoot us an email or give us a call. We got our cellphones with us all the time, so don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great. My mother is a retired nurse, so I know, but she is, she's still a little shocked that none of her four children went into the medical field at all, so, but.
Heidi's a family nurse, because she's married to my nephew.
Oh, really? Oh, wonderful. That's great. Okay, all right, moving on. The approval of the administration's recommendation for Jefferson Elementary, Mr. Garner.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm here to present to you our recommendation for Jefferson Elementary School. We did have, per the memo, we had 23 applicants, of which we dwindled that down to two finalists, and ended up picking Dr. David Newman. Dr. Newman comes to us from South Milwaukee. He has a combined 25 years of elementary administrative experience, both as an assistant principal and principal, and has most recently served as the Director of Standards and Assessment for South Milwaukee School District. So tonight, we're asking for your approval, so we can welcome him this week even, believe it or not.
Motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Murray and a second from Commissioner Bellard. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, staff wellness update.
Excellent, good evening Commissioners. I'm gonna just fix this because there's some feedback happening, I don't know if you can hear that, but I gotta pull that away from me, that little voice is gonna drive me crazy. Okay, good evening, I could not have written tonight's script any better than to have you open with that safety message, because I was sitting over there thinking to myself, I know exactly what he's looking for, because I'm using that with our well-being plan. And so, with where things are at, I'm gonna ask you two questions this evening, okay? Two questions, and the responses are here and now. Okay, so I want you to think to yourself, where am I? Your response is, here. And what time is it? Now, right? Here and now. It's that presence of mind, right? Knowing where you're at, making sure that you're there, you're, you're with it at all times, understanding where you're at. When we talk about wellness, we think about our staff, and wellness isn't just the data points on, on a chart. It isn't just your blood pressure, or your BMI, or any of those numbers. We're talking about wellness as a holistic approach to the whole person, and that includes mental, mental health, it includes financial health, it includes physical health, career, community, and social health. All of those pieces come into effect when you talk about the whole being and wellness. So we're getting away from the idea of a wellness plan and looking at a well-being plan. And, and I can't help but think of Commissioner Murray and all the conversations that we have had about wellness and point systems, and we've been through it all, haven't we? We've tracked points, and we've done, we've done walking and different things, and trying to earn different points, always, always just trying to check off a list or get to a bottom of trying to affect data points. And as we've said, if you're a person who wants to have ice cream and pie every single night, there isn't anybody here that's going to tell you that that's gonna change that, only you can change that, right? So, so we have to really, really think about what, what can affect change in the school district of Janesville as far as our staff are concerned. And I will also say that Commissioner Dahmershausen wants us to be committed to mental health in something that we have communicated a lot about, and how we work going forward, we need to take action, and take action now with our well-being plan. So, what we've done in the benefits department is in June, we surveyed our directors, principals, assistant principals, coordinators, I think, and our deans. And we, our focus was on well-being, and how important is it to you to focus on mental health? How important is, you know, what are we doing? How comfortable are you handling a mental crisis with your people? And, and how are you doing with your own mental health? So 96% of the respondents ranked mental health as extremely important to staff and their well-being. 75% of the respondents feel well-equipped to assist a staff member who comes to them with a mental health concern. And 90% of respondents were interested in attending professional development for handling mental health concerns. So we believe wholeheartedly, just kind of the flip on this, it's Jamie Stephanie and I basically in that benefits department, handling 1,600 employees and trying to make a difference in wellness. So we took a step back and we thought, who do we need to get involved to really affect change in climate and culture in the buildings? Our leadership, our principals, that's where we started with this piece. They wanted professional development, so we're giving them professional development. Today started out with Deepak Chopra's exercise in regard to that, where am I and what time is it? Here and now. So really taking the presence of mind with our principals about being focused on where you're at, because so often, you're, you're busy answering an email when somebody's there talking with you, or you've got so many things that are running through your mind in that present moment when somebody is there trying to share information. So it's that, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna put this off to the side, and I'm gonna give you 100% of my attention. So it starts there. Next week, we're gonna talk about the Wheel of Life. And the Wheel of Life goes through an exercise where some of you might know what this is, but it's an exercise where you rank different areas that have to do with wellness, so those areas of mental, physical, financial, career, community, and social, and you give yourself a 1 to 10, where am I at in those areas? And so each of them will be different, and we'll take them through an exercise so that they can get into the presence of mind of what do I need help with? Where am I struggling the most, and what do I need to focus on? And that's only gonna help them grow their own, and their own staff. Then we also have Mercy Care coming in and working through our EAP, which is the Employee Assistance Program, and how that works. Right now, everybody, it's, everybody thinks it's only mental health. It isn't only mental health, there's a lot that goes into an EAP. We're gonna explain what that is, because right now, if a staff member goes to one of our principals, the principals say, call Tina Johnson and here's a piece of paper, call that number. And that's, that's ultimately where it's at. And some of them feel comfortable having some conversations and counseling them through it, but for the most part, it's, call Tina and here's a piece of paper. There's more we can do with that, there's a lot more we can do with that. So we're gonna talk about that with Mercy Care. And then the next week, we're gonna bring in Dean Health, we're actually bringing in Kathy Chambers, she's one of our counselors at Dean Care, and she's the one that's on the other end of the phone, and she's going to put out scenarios with our, our principals, and they're gonna workshop it. They're gonna go through each of those, and how do you talk to an employee in this situation, and give them a top 10 list of things to say to an employee who might be in crisis? So whatever, whatever that will look like. So we're giving them the training and getting them started. Then, further, how are we gonna go about getting this to our staff? Well, we created well-being toolkits. So what this looks like is, each of these focus on mental, physical, financial, career, community, and social, and then each have two options. So we talk about compassion, fatigue, resilience, all day long, you're working with students and you're trying to make sure they're happy and everything's good, and we're taking care and taking care, and you're depleting your own compassion level, right? So then by the end of the week, exhausted, but you know that you have to keep on going. Well, that, that wear and tear on the body and the mind is, is pretty incredible, if you've ever been in that situation, and I see, you know, Commissioner Myers over here nodding right along with me as a teacher. So we're gonna work on that, and how we do that is, each of these look like this, I'm not gonna go through each of them this evening, and then we scroll down. There we go. So area of focus, mental health, compassion, fatigue, resilience. So we start with action brainstorming worksheet or monthly well-being awareness logs, and the principals are able to ask the following questions if they would like, and they're all set up for them. So, any one of those highlighted areas, so the example today was to, on Monday morning, you're gonna tell, you know, your staff is going to work on compassion resilience. These are your two questions that are kind of just icebreakers for that Monday morning meeting. You might continue on down and add an article or an activity, and say on Thursday at our staff meeting, we're gonna discuss this, we're gonna take 10 minutes, and we're gonna break this down. And every staff member will break it down, reflect, and work on a different element of what compassion resilience is. And then the next month, they get to choose another one, and then another one, and then another one. You might be asking, well, how are people going to choose? The principals are going to survey their staff beginning in September. And in September, they will create a schedule based on all of these topics, and each month they will go through it. My role in that then becomes, let's say three of our schools choose compassion, resilience. It's a lot, it's a lot more efficient for me to then assist those three schools or those three administrators in implementing this plan and getting it out to them. So I think, I think from a management position, it's, it really is a more broad, efficient way to get the information across. So in all of these, we are working with Dean and Mercy, Cottingham and Butler, MetLife, and Forward Janesville, to get all of these pieces really put together. So, the philanthropy, the volunteerism, the retirement income planning, the investing 101, those are all pieces and elements of things that people are thinking about constantly that are in the back of their mind while they're teaching, or they're working, or they're, whatever they're doing, and it's not keeping them present in the moment. This is our schedule, so September is the kickoff, in October and November, it's school choice. And you may recall, a couple years ago, we did the December mindfulness month, where we had Zen rooms and some, you know, quiet space, and the principals really got into being able to create that space, and I really think the teachers appreciated that. So we're gonna take some time and do that in December. January, February, March, and April are all school choice, and then May, we're gonna, we're gonna do a fun wrap-up activity to bring it all together in, in the end, culminating activity. Here is the school choice log, so you'll see all of the activities that they can choose, either option one or two, and they can sign up, and then the, the schools are along the side. And then we will, with each of those, build out the schedule from a benefits perspective as far as how we're going to assist and implement. This morning, when we were talking with the principals about this, several, several of them were like, well, what if we have more staff in our building, like a Craig High School or a Parker High School, can we do more than just one option? Absolutely. You know, the ball's in your court as far as that goes. And then here's just an example of the monthly well-being awareness log that the staff can use to reflect. They can create, they can be given this monthly well-being awareness and set their goal, and then they go, they go from there with, okay, I'm gonna stick with my plan, do I need to make adjustments on week three, week four? Did my adjustments work? And then week five, is this something I can continue? Am I gonna continue to focus on my vision board? Am I gonna continue to focus on my retirement planning? Or, gosh, that healthy eating was really great, I'm gonna really stick with that. So, so however they wanna go about that process. So that's our well-being plan. I think it really speaks to the whole person, and it talks a little bit more about climate and culture in each building, and how they can bring together their wellness topics, rather than thinking we always have to affect the data and the insurance pieces. Any questions?
Thank you very, very much. Yes.
This is great. I have two questions, one being on the school choice log, would you be able to just, it's hard for us to see, there's so little, could you just list some of them? I think it'd be nice to know what some of the options are.
So they are also listed on the slide.
Oh, on, on this one?
Yes, they're all the same.
Okay, all right, I can see that then, thank you. All right. And then the other question I had in just thinking about, okay, they're scheduled like monthly, when will that take place? Is there, is it like a PD day? Is it, how is that being implemented in, like, during the school day? How, when is that going on?
Sure, sure. So what will This morning, when we were talking with the principals about this, several, several of them were like, well, what if we have more staff in our building? Like a Craig High School or a Parker High School? Can we do more than just one option? Absolutely. You know, the ball's in your court as far as that goes. And then here's just an example of the monthly well-being awareness log that the staff can use to reflect. They can create, they can be given this monthly well-being awareness and set their goal. And then they go, they go from there with, okay, I'm going to stick with my plan. Do I need to make adjustments on week three, week four? Did my adjustments work? And then week five, is this something I can continue? Am I going to continue to focus on my vision board? Am I going to continue to focus on my retirement planning? Or gosh, that healthy eating was really great. I'm going to really stick with that. So, so however they want to go about that process. So that's our well-being plan. I think it really speaks to the whole person. And it talks a little bit more about climate and culture in each building and how they can bring together their wellness topics rather than thinking we always have to affect the data and the insurance pieces. Any questions?
Thank you very, very much. Yes.
This is great. I have two questions, one being on the school choice log. Would you be able to just, it's hard for us to see, there's so little. Could you just list some of them? I think it'd be nice to know what some of the options are.
So they are also listed on the slide.
Oh, on, on this one?
Yes, they're all the same.
Okay, all right, I can see that then, thank you. All right. And then the other question I had in just thinking about, okay, they're scheduled like monthly. When will that take place? Is there, is it like a PD day? Is it, how is that being implemented in like during the school day? How, when is that going on?
Sure, sure. So what will happen with that? And we talked about that this morning. It is really implemented by the administrator, by the principal in the building. So as, as one example that we talked about this morning, Monday morning, they may come in and they have their starter, their starter kit. And it can be questions or it can be an article. And the principal will send it out to their entire staff and say, hey, staff, read this article, we're going to talk about it at our staff meeting on Thursday. And then, and then every week, there will be more information that comes out.
Thank you. Any, yes.
This is really good. And I love that December is a mindfulness month because of everything going on. It's good to, good to be made to slow down. So how, Tina, not that I don't trust the administrators, how do you ensure they are doing these and conducting these monthly?
Sure, so that would be my role as we go forward. Every, you know, month, every other month, I'm checking in with staff. We're doing surveys. We're checking in with the administrators and having those conversations. I think for them, it's overwhelming. I say, okay, we're going to go talk about fitness and give them nothing. These are actual toolkits that give them absolutely everything they need. All they have to do is click and pull and drag. And then it's up to them how far they want to take that. And then from my perspective, I will be checking in with the administration to ensure that each one of them is making sure that they have everything they need.
Lot of work.
Yep.
Good work. Thank you.
So it's one more thing for the administrators to do. And I guess that becomes a little bit of my concern. You, you started off with it being individual, whether I have a piece of pie or candy or whatever every day, I can make that decision. But now it's one more thing for the administrator to, to really try to drive. Well, for, and that's just one thought. The other piece and really what I was getting to is, so if one of our employees are really grab a hold of something, is there information available for them to do a deep dive separate from being somewhat spoon-fed by the administrator?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, each one of these toolkits has a lot of information in them. They, everybody, I have the resources of all of our vendors. Everybody's involved in creating this plan. And I, I guess I will address, so yes, I would get information to anybody who needed it. Our administrators all have all of the information. So if somebody really wanted to deep dive, that's something that we can develop and grow out. As far as our administrators and having one more thing to do, I want to address that because I think that how do you get somebody to not feel like it's one more thing to do? And I, I think that's a great point. And in talking with them, they're, they're all, they're on board with this mostly because it's created for them. Everything is right there within, in front of them. Last year, when we sat down, and it was a different time and it was difficult, they were asking, I sat at a table with a group of elementary and middle school principals who were saying to me, can the district create something for us? We can implement it, but can you create something for us that we can distribute to our staff members? And this morning, I would say overwhelmingly, the response was very positive. A lot of nodding heads, really focused, understanding what it was and, and many emails and, and, you know, just interest in, in how we were going to move forward. So, you know, this is new. This is something brand new. It's a new way to think about it. It's a new way to go about this process. Certainly, there will be tweaks along the way and definitely things that we'll be communicating out.
I would encourage, maybe as a lead-in or a prelude to that is, you know, really kind of making sure that the reason why it's being done is because the care for our staff in the first place. And, and then why should the staff care about themselves? I mean, because ultimately, that's the drive to make a change. Of course, I kind of know that because I've done a little bit of that recently. But it becomes, you know, the, the, the tools will be here, but they're only as good as the usage by our staff ultimately, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that. We talked about that this morning as well. And, and I think Director Perrinboom also, we had a conversation. She said, it's really important to tell them why we're doing this. And each of us have goals. And each of us as directors have, you know, plans that we have to put forward ourselves. And so this is born off of that as well as the idea that if our staff aren't 100% well or aren't, aren't focused, what does that mean for our students? And so it all comes back to the students' full circle. So we also had that conversation, but absolutely agree with you.
And I would just say the language is, you know, we care about you. Obviously, the byproduct is that they're for the student. But I think it is, as an employee myself, you know, you can be left with, do they even care? And yes, that's why these things are being provided. Thank you.
Hey, emails? Oh, yes, go ahead. Commissioner Paul.
Thank you. Great points, Greg. And I would say that the administrators are already dealing with these things. And so I think it's really nice to see the district helping facilitate delivery in a, you know, easy, easy-to-process way. Hopefully, it will be. One, I guess, just feedback or thought I have in reflection to the mental health, compassion, fatigue, resilience, is I wonder how much we are also including potential substance abuse topics? Because I know that in, in the education field, teachers, educators give so much of themselves. And that can be a concern, substance abuse, when, you know, you're needing to relax after the stresses of all of the things. And that would be something that I would really like to see incorporated and making sure that we are including that topic in, in there.
Okay, duly noted.
Hey, Commissioner Herta, and then Commissioner Stammerhosen.
I just thank you for putting this together. And I, as you were talking, I saw that administrators, I know we have wonderful administrators in our buildings, could get really fun and creative with some of these topics and how they incorporate it. So when that idea was floating through my head, just for feedback, I always love it when teachers share with one another. So an idea for that May wrap-up is to dedicate some time so that the administrators could share what they've done in their buildings with other principals so that they can use those tricks and tips and add it to their toolboxes and say, oh, I didn't think of doing it that. I would have never sung that compassion fatigue thing over the loudspeaker as teachers were, I mean, I'm very creative. So I'd be like, I don't need to read something to my staff, but I'd sing it to my staff. Things like that, the administrators will figure out a very creative way to get the message across. But I think an opportunity to share that at that wrap-up might be very helpful so that they can learn from their peers.
For sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Stammerhosen?
Yes, I also would like to congratulate you on putting this together. I think it's very important. It's been part of my mind and I know here, his mind and others here, how do, how do we move forward on that? And I think what really brought it up was the virus and what its effect on people and the terrible pressure put on by, I will say, parents, by other groups of people, do it this way or do it that way. I think there's some other things to be known on these things. The program will kind of naturally evolve. It will, and we'll learn. And next year, it'll even be better as such. But some of the things, people that have mental health problems, which is a tremendous number of people that do have that, some are very minor, some are very strong problems. But it kind of bring it out that, don't be afraid, let's talk about it. Let's see what we can do. And as our administration and as our teachers understand it better, because it's a tough subject to understand. I've had it in my family, people with severe issues. And it just, just isn't just mental, but physical disabilities and other things. And that, they'll recognize it in their students. They'll be able to say, could you come in and help me with this? I think I see something here, whatever the reason or things would be. So we've, I, I think to a degree, not wanting to do it, but we've ignored it in the past. I don't think we wanted to ignore it. It just wasn't convenient to bring up, or it was troubling, or I don't understand it, or something else. So we didn't bring it up. But I would like to see that our administration and our instructors and that are able to recognize it and help our students just as much. And I think Greg brought that up too, that that's important, that they recognize it. And I know you, Tina, you have everyone's health in mind, so appreciate it. But thank you very much for everyone that is part of this.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner Henel?
Will you be using outside resources for any of these topics? Or anybody coming in to do presentations or anything like that?
Yes, so Dean and Mercy will be coming in to do some leadership work. And then they also are all very much involved here. MetLife is actually, they, they do more than just our dental, but they are one of our vendors and they are doing all the financial wellness awareness, which we've been doing. We have a university for financial that many, many of our directors team and administrators and different staff members have already taken. But this takes a little bit deeper dive into retirement planning and really trying to focus on those 20 and 30-year-olds who don't understand their WRS and they don't understand about 403Bs. And so we want to give them a 101 course. So we're working with MetLife to build those out. In addition to Cottingham and Butler, they are our primary broker. And they have a whole plethora of resources and sources that will both be coming in as well as providing information to share out. So it's not just me creating or just going out and Google searching for things. There's a little bit of that, but I'm, we're actually using professionals in the information share.
Okay, anybody else? Well, I want to thank you in particular. So I remember, you know, when I first started out, especially as a new teacher, you end up on every committee and you're trying to figure out where you kind of fit in. And you're also learning the job, you know? I know you went to school for it, but, but being in it is different. Yeah, the former teachers over here think that's funny, so. You know, and, and so there's, you know, and, and I remember when I started sort of this badge of honor of being able to see how many plates I could spin at the same time. And what I've discovered, and it didn't, by the way, it's taken a long time to figure that out, is that while I might really, you know, pat myself on the back for being able to do all of these things, I was doing all of these things superficially. And so I was really glad to see this, the conversation start with Chopra. And, and, and I think there's been an attitude, a sea change, you know, with this, the movement toward mindfulness nowadays, you know? And, and just like doing a lot of things in a, you know, mediocrally or poorly is not, is, is, is not good. But doing a few things very well is. And so, and, and so that, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see this shift. And I think that it will help our teachers. Commissioner Murray, before the meeting, mentioned how many great, how great it is. We have all these young teachers coming on board. We were looking at the, you know, the new list and, and how cool that is. But helping them with like their, and, and I like this because it's so diverse. You know, helping them with all this kind of stuff about like their financial health and also, of course, self-care and, you know, that kind of thing. I just, I like how expansive it is. I like how it's, I like how it's, it's, it's a broken down into a lot of different things. And, you know, and where you are in the stage of your life, you know, is, you know, can be addressed as opposed to someone like me maybe doing something about how to manage your young family. That's, that's past, you know, that's done. So, so anyway, I just, I really, I was nodding a lot because I, it reminded me of those days. And, and just how hard it was to start the early days of teaching. But even, but it also reminded me of just the last few years too, you know? Just, I, I, learning how to know where your energies are best applied. So thank you very, very much. Thank you. Anything else?
Just one question. Could we get a copy of this email to us?
Sure.
Because you went into a lot more depth on, on there. And I'd like to be able to, first of all, see it better.
Sure.
So thank you.
Absolutely. And just know that it's going to be continued to be added to. This is, this just began the beginning of June when school let out. So we continue to grow this. We've had, you know, a solid month working on it. But we continue to build it and the principals just got this all today. So they're going to have feedback about what's doable and, and how we move forward with it as well. So stay tuned, we'll give you more in the future.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, yes. Okay, moving on to school programming. Mr. Pufa?
So I, before I jump into that topic, I want to just thank Tina and her department. Again, from an organizational point of view, from a systems point of view, right? We're, we're really interested in, in Janesville being the preferred public sector employer in South Central Wisconsin, right? Because when we, you know, make sure that we have the right folks in front of our kids, you know, we position ourselves in the best possible way to deliver on our promises for them. And we know that a lot of things go into what it is that makes it attractive for somebody to choose to come here and work as opposed to some other place and to stay once they get here. And certainly, compensation is part of that. And that's what often gets talked about and that's important. But it's not the only thing that matters. You know, right, right close next to that is your relationship with your direct supervisor. Right next to that is the culture and climate, the environment and the workspace that you're in. And all of these things co-mingle together to create an environment that ultimately results in us being able to keep those and attract those, you know, top-level performers to our team. And so kudos to, to really the whole director's team, specifically on this one, Tina and her team, for helping us take a really progressive step forward to deliver on that outcome. I'm embarrassed to admit, my wife told me she's making fresh cobbler for me when I get home tonight. And I'm going to have to put some ice cream on it, so. But it'll have fruit in it, right? So, so it's healthy, right? Anyway, bear with me. Well, 21, 22, right? Exactly, right? Yeah, just come on along and, and grab a plate, so. It's, it feels so good to be here talking about 21, 22. And, and I remember being, standing, standing literally at the same meeting in July one year ago, right? And, and, oh, the really difficult decisions we were struggling with. And, and while there's still, you know, a little bit of work to be done, certainly as it relates to making sure we're cautious about how we navigate, you know, through the remainder of this tail end of this pandemic, it's certainly in a, a much better spot that we find ourselves in tonight than, than we did just a year ago. And so I wanted to just take a few minutes tonight to really share out with our community. Honestly, obviously, in addition to all of you, you know, what, what, what are our plans looking like for the fall? Registration just opened up last week and goes through early August. And so parents that are listening out there, please get in there and get your kids registered. And if you were looking for a little more information that helps you make whatever decisions you think might be the best for your children for the coming fall, then hopefully this will help you tonight. So Patrick, if you would. Oh, I'm sorry, I can do it myself. So we learned a lot last year. And I won't take time to begin to try to describe what all of that was because it ranged from, wow, it sometimes works better for kids to not be using street lockers. And, oh, it works really great when passing time doesn't have all 900 of them moving at the same time. We have less student conflict, imagine that, right? And so, duh. So, you know, but there's a lot that we learned instructionally as well. And so one, and, and, and at the very center of that, not a surprise, but like clearly, for the vast majority of kids, the vast majority of time, coming to school and learning in person is absolutely what moves the needle most for, for almost every kid, right? And, and I could, I could go into a whole presentation on that, you know, and show all kinds of data to like give you evidence of that. But trust me, you know, and again, that's not a surprise. There's a reason why the taxpayers invest a lot of money in the district. And, and part of that investment is in our facilities. Because if we didn't have to have kids come to school, we wouldn't need those, those facilities. And we wouldn't need to spend the millions of dollars that we need to, to maintain them. But trust me, they're needed because kids need to come to school. And so kudos to all of you for working with the administration to support that work throughout the entire pandemic. Again, us being one of the only big districts in the state. Over half the kids in the state, you know, when you say the 15 biggest districts in the state, that's over half the kids that didn't get to go to school in person, but they did in Janesville. And it took a lot of courage and a lot of careful planning, a lot of heroic work by people like these nurses and all kinds of other folks, you know, that were able to, to execute that. But it started here with you. And so thank you for that. you know, that were able to, to execute that. But it started here with you. And so thank you for that. Kids need to come to school. Elementary this fall will really look a lot like it did last year. And, and it worked quite well last year, right? Our elementary schools were open all year long. On, on a rare occasion, we had to, you know, pivot a building closed for a couple of weeks because of some COVID stuff, but it really wasn't because of COVID. It was really because of the number of staff who were getting quarantined and our, and our limited number of subs and our ability to staff a building, right? That's, that's really what always ended up resulting in us having to pivot a building closed. So we're going to have in-person learning as an option. We anticipate the vast majority of our students will select that option. Just to give you a little quick walk down, you know, history lane, you know, about 9,300 kids in the district, give or take, depending on the day that you're doing the count. Last year, at the beginning of the year, 3,200 of them, K-12, were at arise. Thirty-five percent or so, right? And typically arise has about 200 kids in it. So that was an interesting little exercise to scale up a school from 200 to 3,200 on maybe two weeks' notice. So, but, but we did it, right? And so we anticipate the majority of those kids will be back at school this year. As we know, elementary kids are not able to be vaccinated right now. We don't know when that, when or if frankly, that, that reality will, will happen. As a result of that, we're using similar class size ratios in our elementary schools this year as we did last year. In other words, we're keeping our, we're going beyond the TPR staffing and we're using ESAR money out of that ESAR 2. Last year it was ESAR 1, this year it's ESAR 2 that we're tapping into to keep those elementary class sizes smaller because it helps us be able to keep some physical distance between kids. And, and of course now the CDC just last week recommended that we can go from six feet to three feet in distancing. And so that, that helps, helps us to, to navigate through that. And I'm, I'll talk more about all the other safety protocols because they're kind of universal, not just elementary specific, just a little later in, in the presentation. Questions about elementary?
What are those class sized numbers?
The average class size right now is if you do like divide all the number of kids in elementary by the number of teachers we currently have hired for elementary next year, it sits at 18.8. Normally our average would be about 20.6. And while that doesn't seem like a big difference, it's a big difference. Any other questions? Middle school, in-person learning continues to be an option as it was last year. We will be running more normal class sizes, class sizes driven by the board's TPR policy. For the most part, with a little bit of exception at the start of the year for sixth graders, seventh and eighth graders are all able to be vaccinated right now if that's a choice their parents make for them. We recognize that some parents will choose that and others won't, and we're respectful of whatever that choice might be. But because we're able to have kids be vaccinated, parents really are making those decisions in the full light of day and they understand what the implications of those decisions are. And so we're going back to more normal class sizes and we're not going to be doing all the kind of crazy cohorting that we did that, you know, limited the amount of other kids that, that any particular student had contact with during the day. Because that really puts a lot of restrictions in what the experience, the school experience is like for, for kids. And so we'll be going back to more normal, normal schedules and rotations and, and movement of kids. And again, honoring those choices that parents make around vaccination. Speaking of vaccination, I'll just do a bird walk here real quickly. We just had a vax clinic that was available, again, obviously in partnership with Rock County Public Health. A couple of weeks ago at Wilson Elementary School, the second dose, which is always three weeks later, I think is coming up next Monday, right? And then Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, July 20, 21 and 22, we have vax clinics going, first round vax clinics being offered at all three of our middle schools. And then three weeks later, folks can circle around. Those are available to anybody in the community, age 12 or older, not just our students. They're free and you don't need an appointment. You can just show up. Two o'clock in the afternoon to five o'clock in the afternoon. So again, we're just trying to make it as convenient as possible for those families that want to make that choice. High school, we had in-person learning, but it wasn't exactly normal, right? It was as abnormal as possible with an AB schedule. That's gone, right? We're back to kids coming to school every day. Kids, high school kids, obviously for the most part have been able to be vaccinated even longer than middle school kids. Again, kind of the same talking points I just used on the last slide, so I, I won't repeat those. But really, you know, returning to the school day academic experience and moving through classes and taking, you know, classes, being, being back to much, much as it was prior to the start of the pandemic. And then I'll, you know, I'll, I'll talk about arise also just as a standalone because we, you know, another thing that we learned last year besides kids need to come to school is we recognize that there are certain things that worked better than others at arise and particularly with younger kids, right? And so more direct teacher to student, we call that synchronous learning going on on a regularly scheduled basis, helps kids more than them just trying to learn completely independently on their own. While there might be some kids in some family situations that that works okay for, that's a pretty heavy lift and it's particularly a heavy lift the younger the child gets. And so we, we will be phasing out the purchased Florida Virtual School Academy curriculum that we were using at arise in math and language arts and phasing in the district's math and language arts curriculum, which we frankly feel like is more robust. It also creates more seamlessness if kids go back and forth between the systems so that at least in those two core, critical core areas, that there's consistency in the instruction that they're getting. So that's a, that's a heavy lift for the staff at arise to take that on, but they're doing it, you know, with open arms and open minds. And so we're really excited about that shift that's going on there. Sixth grades, 612 have always had a hybrid option where you could take part of your day at arise and part of your day in person. That, that's been an option for us for 15 years. Arise has been an option for us for 15 years. And so those, those choices to be virtual or to be hybrid will continue as they have for us for, for a long, long time. So let me shift a little bit into some of the, you know, where are we at with some of the safety protocols? We continue to monitor and work closely with our, our health department folks. The CDC, as I mentioned earlier, just came out with new guidelines just last week. You know, obviously we pay close attention to those things. Typically when that happens, the Wisconsin DHS, you know, kind of says, yep, check, check, check. This is what we're going to do in Wisconsin. That's typically what happens. And then once Wisconsin DHS does that, then Rock County goes through and says, yep, we're adopting. That's, you know, what CDC said, that's what DHS said, that's what Rock County is going to do. That's typically the, the flow of that work. I was, I was on a, you know, we continue, we meeting the county superintendents. We continue to work together as we started doing a, a, literally a year ago to work with the health department. And we were on as recently as just last Thursday, having a virtual meeting with them. And so we continue to monitor, you know, the, the changes. Just last week, the one change we talked about that was big was six feet to three feet, right? And so today it's July 13th. By September 1st, you know, will there be more changes? Probably. Can I tell you what those are? No. But, but I can assure you that when we know what they are, we'll, we'll be prepared to, to be flexible and to move and to keep our kids safe, but to, you know, keep our kids' learning and school experience as normal as we possibly can while we do that. So running through what, what are some of the protocols right now as we know them at this moment in time on July 13th? One of the big ones that people want to ask about right away as well, what about quarantining? The quarantining rules basically are pretty much with one exception, the same as they were last spring and last winter. Originally quarantining was for 14 days. Then I don't remember the exact timing, but last spring it was shifted from 14 to 10 days or to seven days if you had a negative COVID test on day six or seven, right? That is still the protocol that is required of us, not recommended by the health department. Now, if you have been vaccinated, you're exempted from being quarantined as long as you're symptom free. If you have not been vaccinated, then the requirement is, is that you have to meet that quarantine requirement. So that's the requirement at the moment from Rock County Public Health. I, I think there's some chance that that's going to continue to shift as time passes, but that's the protocol at the moment. And so we will continue to monitor that and like any other requirement, you know, we will follow it. There are some things that are requirements and other things like the next one on our list, wearing masks, which is a recommendation, not a requirement. And that's a decision the board made back in June, a month ago to, you know, let's go mask wearing optional. We did that throughout summer school. We did not have a single incident or event of, of COVID during summer school. And the fact that we didn't have masks on didn't seem to affect that. So again, we'll continue to monitor that, work with our health department officials and differentiate between requirements and recommendations and, and requirements we're going to follow, recommendations, you know, we can make those choices here. Again, three feet apart, one of the additional things we're using some of that ESAR money for is we're getting water filling stations. I mean, like dozens of them, all, all of our schools, all over the place, which is going to be great even without COVID, right? So that people can fill water bottles, make that super accessible, super convenient. So that's one of the things that's going on that's actually new for this year. We'll continue with the ramped up air exchange protocol that we used last year throughout all of the buildings in the district. The air is turning over six to eight times per hour, depending on what building you're in, and it's being filtered while that's happening. And so, you know, those, those units will stay in high mode, if you will, to keep that air moving and keep that fresh air going in and out, which obviously we think was an important part of, of our success last year. Cleaning and sanitizing processes and procedures will remain the same. Our custodial team will be using the same, you know, germ killing, you know, substances and, and solutions, you know, that, that keep our surfaces clean. You know, we'll keep the hand sanitizer units that are really literally in every room in the district filled and, and accessible. We'll be doing all the other things that, you know, that we were doing around those things last year. The one place where, where it's important for me to mention, that I forgot to mention on mask wearing is the one place where kids have to wear masks yet is on the bus. Because that's a federal requirement right now. So you get on an airplane, you get on a bus, you have to wear a mask. And that's, that's a federal requirement at the moment. And so that will stay in place for those kids who are bus riders at the moment until that rule gets changed. So if you get asked about that or are wondering about that, it's important for you to know that that's not us making that up. That's, that's us, again, following a mandate that, that the federal goes. So you go, you go to an airport, go get on an airplane, we've all heard what happens if you try to do that without a mask right now. It doesn't go well, right? So we have to follow those same rules because those same rules apply to buses. Finally, again, you know, we'll stay flexible. We'll keep monitoring and working with the health department. We'll keep communicating with our parents. We'll keep communicating with you. And we'll stay abreast of the, the latest movements in regards to safety protocols. Moving beyond the curricular program, as we did last year, we, we began to phase back in, you know, our sport teams, our clubs. We will be doing that in full force this year. It was focused a little bit more around the high school last year in terms of bringing things back. Our middle schools, you know, we will, we will be moving forward with full programming. We tended to find the WIAA's recommendations about safety protocols to be pretty useful. And we're waiting for them to come up, come out with their updated fall guidelines. And we, we used those frankly for our clubs and all of our activities and, and found those guidelines to be really pretty sound. And so we will continue to use and anchor off of those guidelines that come out of the WIAA and, and adapt where we need to, you know, when it's a club or a unique situation that might be a little bit different than a, than a sports environment. Field trips will come back. Volunteers in our schools will come back. I didn't make slides for all of these things, right? But again, we'll have some protocols in place. People will be asked, as they were this year, if they have symptoms, whether they're COVID symptoms. If you have a fever, you know, you, we're going to ask you to not be at school, right? Until you're fever free without fever reduction medicine for 24 hours, right? Because that's going to be all, all of those things will be part of the protocol. But we, we do those things because we want to give kids back these experiences. We want to get them back out to JSOL and we want to get them to the zoo and we want to get them to BizWorld and we want to get them to the campus visits and we want to get them to all the other things that are really so essential of a part of the program that we offer to our kiddos. Finally, another thing that we'll make a little bit of a tweak with is take what we've learned, right? We, we do have two snow days built into the calendar that the board approved and we will, we will honor those two snow days. You know, there are some things COVID shouldn't take away, right? And a snow day just seems like maybe it's one of those things. But if we have more than two of them, then we're going to pivot to virtual. So that doesn't happen very often, but you know, as soon as I say that, you know what happens, right? Couple of winters ago, I think we had like seven of them, right? Because of cold weather, right? So if we get into a situation where we get to day three or, or beyond, it's going to be really pretty seamless for us to pivot to virtual at that point. And then we don't have to worry about ever adding days on at the end of a school year. Finally, just some quick reminders for those folks who are watching. Registration started last week. It runs through August 9th. There's some information up here about how you go about going through that registration process or if you have questions and need help. And, and please, 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 it's so important for you to get your children registered by August 9th because that gives us just a few short weeks to finalize and deploy our, our staff and to be ready for your children to arrive on September 1st. Questions?
Thank you very much. That was perfect timing for the public to hear this in ourselves. I was really interested about the bus part. That was new information for me. So are we talking about anytime our students get on a bus, if we hire a bus to take kids to the track meet?
Yeah.
Got to wear a mask.
Got to wear a mask or to and from school.
A field trip.
Yep.
Got to wear, anytime you're on a bus.
Whenever you're on a bus.
Okay.
And you're on the district jet as well, right? No, 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 it's not.
This might be, this is kind of like too, my nose isn't too far on this, but I can't help but think, you know, little Joey gets to hop on the bus and doesn't have a mask.
Yeah.
So I would hope.
On the bus because these same requirements were in place last year. So we.
Okay.
We make it, we make that happen smoothly.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Having recently ridden the city bus, I can tell you that there are masks on the city bus too.
Ah, there's a.
So, yes.
I would say registration is very easy. Previous years, we've had to redo everything. And this was just, touch up the last couple of missing blanks since it's, it is really easy to do this year. I did that last week. My question is around lunchtime and breakfast. So I know other districts are still making the kids stay in the classroom for that. We are letting the kids get back to the lunchroom and thank you, thank you.
Yes, our kids are going back in the lunchroom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Are they, are there, are they seated differently or anything like that?
Again, where we can.
Yeah.
Right? Where we're going to honor three feet, we will.
Okay.
Right? And, and sometimes we can and sometimes we can't.
Yeah.
And probably the more common accommodation that we'll be making or adjustment we'll be making is maybe having them seating, you know, more by a cohort when they're in the lunchroom so that if there is a situation with a kid, they weren't sitting at a table with five different groups of kids for three days and then we find out we've got to send, you know, 18 kids home instead of five or six.
Right.
And so there may be a little bit of that kind of stuff going on, but we want kids to have that experience.
Sure.
Being with their friends, being out on the playground with their friends and, and having that joy back.
Wonderful. Thank you. Fisher Harder.
The cleaning and sanitizing, are the protocols exactly the same? The expectations as students leave, then we're sanitizing in between?
Yeah, you know, we, we rely on our staff obviously to do that. And staff actually got students involved with that even at times, particularly with older kids. So basically that handbook that the district put together last year in terms of cleaning protocols, that really all stands as is for the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very, very much. Thank you. Okay, moving on, presentation and to consider the approval of business services reorganization. Mr. McCray.
No, no, that's, that's okay. No, it's, it's great. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. So included in your packet, as was referenced amongst the chatter, is a memo. Usually I try to get those to one page. It's a little bit longer than that, as you saw. So, but really kind of wanted to set a little bit of the background, a little bit about, I'd say, my philosophy, the department.
I'd say, my philosophy, the department's philosophy and essentially where we need to go. So I think some of my peers and others who are willing to listen, if you will, it's, it's accounting is, is really what we do. It's not who we are. And I think over the last number of years, it's really been who we are. So we're a business services department, right? With the emphasis on service. And then when we look at business, right? So I'm not a teacher, right? So I have a business background and I have the MBA, but hopefully I'm very supportive, right, of what we're trying to do here as a district. And it's always this natural battle, right? Between money and mission of an organization, whether it's, if you will, product development in the private sector versus sales and R and D and production, right? There's always these, these pulls at one another. And the for, not-for-profit sector where I spent some time, right? Again, money and mission. And here in K-12 education, really it's the same in terms of money and mission. We can't let go, one, right? There's a, there's a great deal of interdependence. So Alison DeGraff is kind enough to entertain me in her office occasionally and talk about, you know, the needs within curriculum instruction and really how do we best find the resources that we have within the district as well as perhaps outside the district to really meet the instruction that goes on in the classroom. And it's important therefore, as you read in the theme of the memo, right, that we have a relatively strong, I shouldn't say relatively, but a, a strong business services department, again, with an emphasis on service. There's some reorganization that occurs, right? So it's really, I'd say, upping our game a little bit in terms of staffing and having someone with a school business management license. That's an O8 in DPI language, right? And having someone who understands really kind of a broad spectrum of things. So I'm kind of going on and on. You have the memo. I can certainly go in and maybe do a little bit better in terms of some questions. I think Commissioner Ardry is, you know, gearing up his arsenal to throw some my way. So.
Thank you. Do you have questions? Okay. You're just holding back? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Skyward is what we use like to pay lunch money, like put into lunch money. Is that that little portal within the portal?
Yeah, um, no, ma'am.
No, okay.
Infinite Campus.
Yeah.
Is the portal.
Yes.
And we actually made a change recently and it was driven by our folks at Infinite Campus. And Bob and his team do, do a great job supporting, we'll say, that window. Kathy Raymond really kind of processes those payments to be sure that they get where they're to go. And so the back of the house on Infinite Campus used to be Vanco. That's switched to Payrex.
Okay.
Skyward, which I think is maybe the gist of your question, right? Is the district's ERP or really financial platform.
Okay.
So HR uses it from a payroll standpoint, employee management. There's a lot of software modules within that as well as the finance modules. And you saw in your packet, right, that table. The items that are highlighted, we're, we're using to some degree, those items that are not highlighted, it's an extremely robust enterprise software that we really need to leverage. We currently have a process for electronic purchase orders that operates outside of Skyward. Skyward actually has that module and it takes over 20 minutes to process an EPO in the system we created versus using Skyward, which is less than four. All right, now, the team was asked, the IT team, to really build that out and they did so notably and dutifully. But really tying it out to our general ledger and leveraging that software is really what we need to do. It's so robust and so in-depth, I could probably go on and on, but I.
Right, no, so the gist of it, I like that you're identifying that we could be using this better and more and that's like kind of the whole point of this restart or one of the big, biggest changes of this restructure is being able to leverage that better. So I think that's great. Thank you for doing that.
Is there a motion?
There's not a motion yet. Is that, is that a motion?
No.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hayworth and second from Mr. Mallard. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? Okay, it passes. We are unanimous and all of us are present. Thank you very much. Okay. Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee report, Commissioner Ardry.
So one thing this, to, to state, I mean, Dan and I have talked about the restructure a whole lot. So I didn't really have any questions, but what I was going to do, Michelle did a job of pointing out the highlights of what really the Skyward is going to come to. Okay. Couple key things I'll point out and then I, I've asked Dan to come and just share a little bit of the budget development update. But the, the key pieces I want to point out is the, as we look at energy usage, I, I don't know if anyone really looked at the, the packet, the Finance Buildings and Grounds packet, but in a minute, I believe the, the costs per building as we look at, you know, per square feet and all of that, just really look at that. And it is interesting, the questions that I have looking at that. And I will just make a comment and it's no pot shot at architects, but you'll see that Kennedy is our most expensive building. It's one of our most beautiful buildings, but you pay for beauty and you pay and you pay and you pay. So it's just one of those things as we look at intelligent design, and I'm not saying that it wasn't an intelligent design. What we really want to do is look at to have beauty and also energy efficient. So as we look at going forward with anything that we are doing, as we look at the pathway updates and, and those kinds of things, it is with a focus on it looking nice, but then also approving energy efficiency. And as I mentioned, the pathway, just a few things to highlight there. Edison and Marshall were moved out of phase two into phase three, just with the complexity of work that would need to be done. No other changes within anything other than since we are opting not to have a separate location for Tagos that was removed from the plan altogether. The other item of note, which is kind of the second part of our referendum is the, the Barler replacement, in particular for Harrison, Kennedy, Lincoln, Madison, Monroe and Ben Buren. And I say Kennedy, only from the standpoint of what I mentioned earlier, whatever system was put in, it was, has been a pain from day two. Because day one, it probably wasn't working at all. But after that, it's day two. It is just, it was just a design that, that was installed. So now they're trying to improve and have a standard design across all buildings and be more energy efficient with that. The other piece to, to highlight, EUA, our, our architects that we hired and really in conjunction with Cullen, they were in. And clearly the partnership that they have with us and Cullen has been, I mean, outstanding. So when we look at the flexibility and what they've went as rough plans to have a secure pathway in one spot and then upon evaluation, it's a completely different location. So I mean, with that, it's been outstanding really for our building principals to go along with some of that, I'll call it whiplash, but they've done an outstanding job and be a great supporter of the project. So I'm really looking forward to, as we continue with the next phases, what comes out of that. And then lastly on my part is, if you look at the, the packet, we had to, well, annually we are always looking at our, our insurance. But as things are changing, particularly in the cyber world, trying to keep pace of that is a bit of a challenge. So you'll see some changes. We have not lessened our protections, but it is just some changes that probably will be ongoing as we look at really what, what we need to do. And I don't really want to get into a lot of details, particularly from the cyber standpoint. So with that, if there's any questions, anybody has of me? If not, Dan, if, I asked Dan to just do a little verbal update for budget development. I asked some things of him, so I'll let him go with that.
Yeah, so some information in Board Docs as part of the, the finance packet and, and we won't take you through, I won't take you through the, you know, 100-page slideshow that I shared at the last meeting. But real quick, so you may have read, the state releases its July 1st aid estimate. All right? And so this is where I'll, I'll get a little excited even this late in the day and say, when the state provides the district with more aid, it is not more money to spend. It truly is property tax relief. All right? And so when there's a headline, and rightfully so, all right, that aid is going to go up approximately 2.9% and, and the district is a July 1st estimate of $1.8 million. It's not $1.8 million in additional money over the prior year to spend because you'll recall, we're still operating within a revenue limit authority. So it's really a redistribution between local taxes and aid. And when a district receives more aid, local taxes go down. Okay? So it's not new, new money. Couple sentinel factors, right? So every time I have the opportunity to share this, right? They come in the fall, nearly three months into our fiscal year, right? And that's our third Friday count, which drives membership. Membership drives the revenue limit authority. All right? So we don't really know what that is. You may recall as well that the board approved some budget assumptions back when it was snowing outside. And that was essentially a cast forward, right? So we took very conservative numbers. And you'll hear me probably say again that when we built the referendum looking forward, we built that on very conservative numbers. Now, when the board adopted the resolution to go to referendum, it was August, right? We hadn't conducted our September 3rd Friday count. We didn't really know who was showing up. So we took a dip, right? So we expect a bounce back. All right? And there are a little bit of complexities within the school finance formula related to that bounce back that we hope to anticipate in September in terms of, excuse me, FTEs returning. And again, FTEs are members, are students who reside within our district. All right? Which then leads me to the next point of open enrollment, right? So open enrollment, right? We have ins and we have outs, right? And this district has been very attractive because we attract more students coming into the school district of Janesville than those who choose to leave the school district of Janesville. All right? And so sometimes you'll hear me say that, you know, that's a potential, if you will, profit center for us, right? So the, you know, ins coming in, right, is revenue, the outs going out are expenses and then there's a net. All right? And that's, that's great for us as a district. That shrunk this past year. All right? So again, we took a very conservative cast forward with that. All right? So remember, we adopted a balanced budget, all right? We locked in and then we cast forward. All right? Which led to, you know, dare I say, deficit, right? So we have to figure that out. And that's administratively what we've worked through, what we shared with finance, right? And so we've closed that. You recall a TPR report, all right? And so we reduced because enrollment's gone down, TPR. All right? But Superintendent Pufall alluded to earlier this evening, right? We have the availability of ESSR funds to address hotspots to continue to keep our class sizes low. All right? And so if you will, if you kind of go back, there's the TPR column in your staffing report. All right? There's almost another column related to ESSR, right? But that's dynamic, that's a snapshot in time. And so perhaps as we see more students return using ESSR funding, all right? We'll be able to essentially use that funding to address and keep those smaller class sizes. And that's kind of it in the snapshot, unless you would like more, Commissioner Ardry? Or if I forgot something?
Only as, as we ended the committee meeting, what I really asked Dan and Superintendent is, we don't have all of the information, but we have enough to be able to present a preliminary budget. So hopefully in one of our upcoming meetings soon, that would be a presentation of just here is the preliminary budget. We're already spending the money, so we can at least say we're spending it under an approved budget, so.
And just one last thing, if I may add to that.
Sure.
So we had finance and then the governor signed the budget, right? And essentially he signed the budget as JFC submitted to Joint Finance Committee. All right? Now he did, you know, because he has the most powerful, one of the most powerful veto pens, right, in the United States. All right? So he was able to essentially take probably a component of his allowable ESSR funding and direct that towards schools. All right? And that's about 100 million. And so that's a number you may read about or heard about or watched on TV. All right? So you go, it's 100 million for approximately 850,000 students, right? So what does that pan out to be? That pans out to be probably just under $118 per student. All right? So it's possible, right? I shouldn't say possible, most likely we'll receive that in some fashion. Now, if you ask the question, so how's that going to work? We haven't received that memo yet, right? So, so stay tuned to that component of the budget development cycle. And one last item, right? And then I know everyone probably wants to get moving on, it's a beautiful evening, is one of the things we've been working through with finance, right? Is we have a plethora of data, right? And so how do we best illustrate that data? And what's the story we tell with that data? And we're not done yet, but that's really a direction we want to go. Giving everyone all types of data is being transparent, but that's not necessarily capturing understanding, right? Not that we're going to make business managers out of everyone, but that's really where we want to move. All right? And so you'll see some things a little bit different perhaps in the finance packet and you'll continue to see that refined over time so that we're providing hopefully not just the data, but a little bit of clarity and a little bit of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Commissioner Hannibal?
You've talked about, excuse me, property taxes and, and school, the aid for the school. One of the things the media has discussed in, in, if you could clarify it in layman's terms, there's been discussion that all they've done is rob Peter to pay Paul, that there isn't any, that the decrease in property taxes is coming at the expense of what aid's going to go to the school, correct? Or am I not?
Yeah, you're close.
Okay. That's where, if you can kind of, because I trust what you're going to say more than what I'm going to hear from, you know, a variety of people that are on the media.
Yeah, no, no. And, and thank you. And a lot of times, you know, I'd say the media gets it right, right? But there's just some deeper understanding that perhaps needs to occur. And so one of the slides I have that I shared, I think administratively as well as with the finance committee, is like all the headlines, right? Because it was so dynamic, right? It's so volatile in terms of JFC and Senator Darling has a recommendation, right? And so they essentially worked through everything, right? And JFC packaged it, sent it to the governor. All right? But really I'll just kind of reemphasize, right? Is, is more money in aid, right? Outside of sparsity aid or poverty aid, some of those, if you will, categorical aids, right? Library aid is an example of categorical aid, right? Those are just specific aids and grants available to, to districts. Revenue limit authority, which did not go up, right? Is significant for districts across the board. Increases in per student categorical aid, which there is none, is what the state has afforded districts rather than increases in revenue limit authority. Because when you increase the revenue limit authority, you're really increasing taxes. So we have no increase in revenue limit authority. We have no increase in per student categorical aid. There's an, and there's other little aids out there, but I'm talking about kind of the big little hanging fruit. All right? When we look at equalization aid or general equalization aid, as it's also known, that was increased. But that truly is just property tax relief. All right? And so when you get into maintenance of effort and ESSR 2 and ESSR 3 and are those in question? The adjustments to increase equalization aid is what's perceived to be as additional funding to schools. It's how our school finance formula works, right? But it's really property tax relief.
So simplistically, the budget, the budget that was, that the governor signed is, is proeducational as opposed to some of the argument that, that the budget didn't do enough.
So I want to say, and you know, perhaps Superintendent Pufall, if need be, can throw me a lifeline, there probably is about 10% of what the governor requested in his budget that was essentially part of the final bill and then signed by the governor. So that left a lot from the governor's perspective on the table. So we had the opportunity, right? It's kind of part of my job, right, to watch, you know, the governor's address. And so if you re-watch that or if you recall watching it, there is a great deal of emphasis on property tax relief. Now, certainly, the DPI State Superintendent Jill Underlee was there and, and kind of touted. It's certainly not anti-education, right? But it's certainly not the governor nor Superintendent Underlee's ideal budget to support K-12 education.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our revenue limit authority.
Yes.
Is the property tax.
Sure, a revenue limit authority is a mix of state equalization aid. All right? So that's about 60-some percent off the top of my head, the remaining balance within your fund tide is local property taxes. Yes, sir.
So your answer on, on, makes me confused, do you think I would know this by now? But so the additional 1.8 million in general equalization aid.
Yes, sir.
Is not additional funding.
Correct.
I'm just repeating where I'm, it's property tax relief. So are you, are we telling the public that the state government has said we're, we're freezing property tax to what last year's authority would have been for us? Because we ta, we've historically taxed to the max.
Correct.
Every year, right? So you're saying, so our authority to increase property taxes is frozen as la, la, last year's level?
No.
Okay.
Right? And, and the reason no, right, is, is revenue limit authority, right, is really driven by membership. So as our membership fluctuates up and down, all right, the revenue cap will fluctuate up and down. All right? So over time, we've been a declining membership district, so we've seen our cap somewhat, you know, stable. Now, there's been, right, so it's school finance, right? So I'm gonna, yeah, it, it's, and, and when I laugh, right, it, it, it's, it's just, there's not always, there's just a lot of levers within school finance. So I don't want anyone who's listening, or certainly anyone on board, to say, if we tax this dollar amount for the 2021 school year, that it will be the same dollar amount for the 2122 school year. The revenue limit most likely is not going up, right? The low revenue limit threshold per student is not going up, but, you know, but, right? And, and there's just, there's just a but in school finance.
I would say, as we head toward really looking at the budget, Dan Denise, if we could, I mean, we went into committee last year, or maybe it was the year before, went into great detail to explain the revenue and expenses. I mean, a great, it was a great presentation by Dan, but if we could highlight those meetings, to go back and just to get a little review, it answers those questions, and just to make sure we're all on the same page, so.
And I'm more than happy, right, to, to be available, you know, someone, or two, or three, or whomever wants to, to come and spend some time. I have a great crystal board that I can write on in my office, right? And so I really enjoy that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, Dan, I think I have this right, remind people that this money that's coming is really just transferring hands to property tax relief, which is good. It's very good. However, this is money that's projected to come forward, not necessarily coming forward. Although, the state can take, if they come up short in revenues, take out of their rating day fund, which would cover some of it. But the point is, in, in two year, after two more years, 21, 22, by annual, they don't know where it's going, and that, because they're projecting that this will continue. So there could be some rocky roads ahead. Always can be.
Sure. So I, I will just quickly say, you know, I, I certainly hope the state legislatures and Joint Finance and the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, which is a great, you know, nonpartisan advisor to, to those under the Capitol dome, that they just really take all the information they're provided to make the best long-term decisions for the health of the state.
It's understood at the moment that there are some lurches, as there always is.
Relative to the state budget, certainly.
As we hit things with COVID, we found that things can change awful quickly, and that, and other things can happen, because we don't know where we're going forward from there. But we have to take what we have, what we're given, and make it work. And that's what we've done so far, thanks to you and other people in the district. So we, we thank you for that.
Yep, and thanks for your participation on the finance committee, for sure.
Thank you. Okay. Last call. All right, thank you very, very much. Okay. Summary of board requests, I don't have any. Ms. Jensen, you haven't seen any, okay? Okay, so we have reached the end of our agenda. What? Oh, I beg your pardon. You're right. Okay, yes, future meetings and dates, go ahead.
Thank you. The next Board of Education meeting is actually a Board of Education workshop on Tuesday, August 10th, at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will meet on Tuesday, August 17th, at 3:00 PM. Currently, the location is to be determined, however, tentatively, it is scheduled for here. And then we have our next Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, August 24th, at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else? Okay, I think we really are adjourned this time. Thanks.